Mayor Anderson, did you, would you like me to stay on with the council ahead? I can pop off if I'm not needed or I'm happy to stay.
Why don't you listen to see if there are comments on skate park? Does that make sense? Okay. Okay. Amy? Do we have other people in the audience? You're on mute.
We do have a couple attendees that are in and available. If you'd like, I could give you the host so you could.
I see Jody. Anyone else?
Uh, we've got a Christina Feig, Victor Prieto, and Claire McClellan.
Okay. Uh, we'll bring the meeting to order, Moser City Council. Five November twenty twenty five. Amy, would you care to do an official roll call?
Okay.
Tell that attendee's in.
They are in. Um, okay, sorry, pardon me, uh, Counselor Campbell.
Present.
Counselor Estes.
Sorry, present.
Don't worry, sorry, Counselor Kerner.
Present.
Counselor Cannon.
Here.
Counselor Wright.
Present.
Counselor Lindmeyer.
Present.
And Mayor Anderson.
Present. Thank you, Amy. First order, any agenda corrections or additions? Andrea, do you have anything to modify? Any counselor going once, going twice?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. Uh, approval of the three October twenty five council meeting minutes. I looked at them, looked pretty thorough, Amy. Any counselors have any comments? Edits? If not, do I have a motion to approve the minutes as written?
I move to approve the minutes as written for the November.
October fifth. October third.
October third, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Any discussion? All in favor? Raise your hands. It's like, I don't see Charlie.
We need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Wait, I'll second it.
Thank you, lady.
You're welcome.
Getting ahead of myself, all in favor? Great. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm in transit between my office and my house.
Okay. You're in favor, proving the minutes. Yeah, okay. Great.
And also, Jane, Jane Elkin reached out to me and asked if she could be admitted. Because I'm driving, I can't look at, um, I don't know if there was, I believe the public meeting had a different Zoom address. I don't know if they're the same address, but she reached out.
Uh, they were the same address. I can see if I can reach out to her.
And, and Mark Payne also.
Okay, we'll just, we'll pause a second, Amy, to see if you can get them in before we continue. Take a brief pause. Everybody go get glass of water. Hi, Colleen.
Thank you. I also have two calendar invites on my calendar, I noticed.
I could get in on the first one, and then I noticed that there was a second invitation.
Okay, we'll let, we'll let Amy work it for a sec here. Mark, Mark has texted me, Amy, if I should advise him, let me know. Oh, he said, he says he was removed by the hosts. But now Zoom won't let him rejoin. Should.
Uh, that's interesting. Um, what's a good email for him? I can try to, to shoot him an email with an invite.
Uh.
You know?
I have him by text.
Okay.
Let's see. Can I give you his text? His phone number?
Uh, I should be able to, sure.
Is that, I guess I can do that publicly?
It should be.
Four one five.
How about Mayor Anderson, could you put it in the chat and only to Amy? Or text it to Amy would be?
Amy, Amy, I can forward you his contact. Maybe.
Okay.
Sorry, it's gonna take me a second, hold on. New iOS. Our ping. Sure, contact. Okay, Amy, it's coming to you here instantly. Okay, I'll tell Mark that you're gonna let him get a new link. Okay. And then how about Jane?
I just messaged her.
Okay. So those are the two we know of. And I guess the media lady did not come back. All right, we'll, we'll give it a minute for Jane and Mark. Everybody okay with that?
Looks like Jane is in. I'm assuming it's Jane, it says Jane OT.
Mark said thanks. So. We have another minute. Making me hungry, Ron. I'm still not seeing them join, Amy. You're on mute.
Sorry, I tried to keep it muted so you don't hear me typing away. I do see Jane is in as an attendee along with Claire McClellan, Kathy with Uplift Local, Christina and Victor.
You haven't combined us yet?
It, I don't believe you can see it because you're not a host. If I make you the host, uh, you can, I can let you do that.
No, that's okay, don't do that. But if they want to speak, I, you know, I can't see them raise their hand, or you'll just have to let me know.
Understood.
Or let them unmute so they can speak. Okay.
Understood.
Okay, we'll continue with the meeting then, and I'm assuming they, Mark and Jane and others can hear. Uh, so we got to approval of the three October twenty five minutes. Now, this is time for business from the audience, comments, concerns, questions, opportunities. Uh, for anyone, one at a time, and please limit to two minutes. So Amy, do you see anyone raising their hand?
I, I do not at this time.
Okay. Welcome Jane, Mark, and others that joined. Okay, we'll go to business. And Christina, Wasco Solid Waste Coordinator, we've had you before, welcome. You're gonna talk to us about recycling. And Christina, what do, what do you think you need? Fifteen minutes or so, give or take? Do your briefing and then opportunity for questions and answers. So Amy, I can't hear her.
Be able to, um. Sorry, it's, I'm trying to keep a note or type and allow her to speak, pardon me. Perfect.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yes, I think so. Everyone thumbs up, great, thank you Christina, welcome.
Thank you.
You're, you're, it's your pleasure if you want to take questions along the way, or would you like to do your briefing and then take questions?
Questions at the end, I do have a PowerPoint presentation with my speech, or I can just blabber it off, but it's a little perfect.
Yeah, you're welcome to use it, we all got it in our packets, so we've all looked at it. Uh, if you'd like to use it, or if you, your choice.
I promoted you, so you should be able to share your screen.
Yes, can you guys see me now? Wonderful. All right. Split screen, sorry, give me one moment. Now my screen is dark. Okay. Bear with me.
Here it comes.
Okay, can you guys see that?
Yes.
Perfect. Alrighty, fifteen minutes will be enough time, and I will take questions at the end, please, and thank you. Good evening, council, my name is Christina Feig, I am the Tri-County Hazardous Waste and Recycling Solid Waste Coordinator. I'm here tonight to give an update about our tri-county program, as well as provide a brief overview for citizens who may not be aware of our services. The tri-county hazardous waste and recycling program is a three-county, nine-jurisdiction program that has been serving the region for over two decades. The core of our program is provide hazardous waste collection events to household businesses and agricultural producers between April and November several times a year. The goal is to remove hazardous wastes like pesticides, chemicals, and other dangerous materials from our three waste sheds. We are also tasked with providing recycling education in partnership with the services that Waste Connection provides. There are many additional things that we do to support proper disposal, such as the disposal of freon appliances, sharps, and providing reusable materials for events. We also allow for e-waste at our rural events. Last year, we collected a little over seventeen hundred thousand pounds of material. This year, we've collected so far up to fifteen hundred thousand pounds of material. Our events are held on a variety of community locations, such as the DOWS transfer station and the Hood River Transfer Station. We do require registration for everyone who attends those events. And we also do require businesses and agricultural producers to submit an application registration one week before our events. This year, we partnered with a local Girl Scout troop to host a recycle art event. A total of sixteen girls participated with six adults, including myself. The event was successful in teaching the girls how to upcycle in fun and creative ways. And our program also supported Waste Connection by advertising the Free Mattress Collection event that was in September. And that was at the DOWS disposal and the Hood River garbage. For the future, we will continue to support Waste Connections, as well as providing education to the younger generations. Our very next event will be November fourteenth in Hood River and November fifteenth at the DOWS. So Hood River Transfer Station and the DOWS disposal. And we do require registration for everyone for those events. We have refreshed our twice, twice yearly newsletter. It goes out to all addresses in our service area and is provided in both English and Spanish. It provides our hazardous waste schedule, along with helpful tips about hazardous waste disposal and recycling. Now, the update on recycling. The modern, RMA, there's Recycling Modernization Act. Today, curbside recycling pickup and drop-offs at the transfer station accept the universal statewide collection list, also known as the USCL. Recycle On is the statewide, public-facing educational organization that is helping all Oregonians feel confident in recycling. So you might be wondering, what is new about this recycling list? Well, for starters, it is one list across all Oregon, and this is it. The new recyclables for our county are plastic tubs without lids, and that's made of PET number one, HDP number two, or PP number five. Buckets, pails, and storage containers made of HDP number two or PP number five. Aseptic gable top style cartons, such as alternative milks, broth, and milk. Nursery packaging and trays made of HDP number two and PP number five. Along with scrap metal weighing under ten pounds or less, or eighteen inches or less in length. No sharps or tanglers are allowed. You can remember the term, if the lid screws on, leave it on. That kind of, kind of helped with thinking about the plastic jugs and bottles of what to do with lids. And make sure the items are rinsed, dried, and cleaned before recycling. We would like to reduce the contamination efforts. And everything else except aerosol cans and tin foil are no longer accepted on the list. But everything else that was on the list prior is still accepted, minus those two things. You might be wondering what your role is in our organization. It is to appoint a steering committee member and a community representative, which is Andrea Rogers. And she does a wonderful job on our committee, and we are happy to have her. And she participates in the annual DEQ Wayshed reporting, along with spreading our outreach material. And if you want to stay in touch with us, follow us on Facebook or Instagram. Email, website, or phone also works. Please note that our email is changing at the end of the month, the at handle will be different. It's Wasco, it's Wasco County OR dot O org, I believe, off the top of my head. So if you want to shoot me an email, and I will get back to you if you have any questions after this presentation, or later in date, if you need anything else. So with that, any questions?
Yeah, hey, hey, I'll start. This may be more for Andrea, I really like your outreach materials to explain, because I'll tell you, I'm one that's always confused on what's recyclable and what's not, and so on. So maybe the question, Andrea, with your help, Christina, seems like this would be a good briefing package to post on our website, so people you know, that look around for it can find, oh, now I can take my big tubs or put them in my bin. And I know Christina, you, you guys do a good outreach, but anyway, that's just a thought I have.
Yeah, I can forward you, um, like PDF or whatnot of our upcoming mailer, along with the new recycling list.
Yeah, and Andrea, maybe, maybe Amy, you guys, John can get it on the website, if that makes sense. Counselors, other questions, comments? Ron, Ron, then Gary?
So, uh, this is kind of a delicate question, but in the past, we've heard of recycling efforts to collect materials that ultimately did not get recycled. And so I just have a question, are these things actually being recycled, all of these things on the list?
Yes, so our, the Recycle On, so the logo you see there, they're run by a program called CAA, the Circular Action Alliance. And their whole kind of gimme of this new law is to make sure that, that the recyclables do get, they actually do get recycled. There is a lot of word wording within the law stating that it has to go to recycling facility. So there are facilities in Oregon that have closed down, just because they can't meet the requirements, and new ones that are opening in order to meet the requirements. So, yes, and it's in the works.
Good, good, thank you, that's good to hear. Gary, did you have your hand up? No? No, okay. Anyone else, counsel? Christina, thank you for your work, thank you for your regular briefings. Uh, we appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
You're welcome to, to stay with us, but you probably have better things to do this evening, so, thank you.
Thank you.
No other questions for Christina? We'll move on, uh, Jody Baer, Stormwater Management or Master Plan. Um, and Andrea, do you need to introduce this? I think this is, and Jody, you'll describe this, I'm sure, but this is a first big warm-up for council on everything that you pulled together. It's not a decision item per se this evening. Is that right? Okay. Unless Andrea, you have something to offer in intro, Jody, the floor is yours.
Okay, thanks. So you guys can hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so I'll share my screen. And then I will. Hang on a sec. Start the slideshow, so you guys can see this first slide?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, so you, you all have a copy, or you got it last Friday, I think, of the draft stormwater management plan. And it's about twenty-five pages of text and figures, and then there's appendices. So I'm gonna, without, so that I don't take too long tonight, this is gonna be a pretty high-level overview. Um, and I'm, there's gonna be like the design criteria details I'm not gonna get into, but I want you to know that any questions that any of you have, um, please either ask them tonight, or as you absorb the materials after tonight. Um, that you either send them to me, or Andrea, or Colleen, and I'll, I'll make sure we get all the questions answered, and we'll probably actually use the questions and answers to, and we'll make sure everybody gets those answers. Um, okay, so this is a draft plan. Uh, we started work on this like early, like, early last year. And it all comes from a grant from the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality through their Clean Water State Revolving Loan Fund Program. And it's a stormwater management plan, so that's for the rain, all the rain that falls and how we manage that. And this is a nature-based stormwater management practices. It is, the, the purpose of this is long-term reliability of the local and regional water sources. And is specifically in stormwater, we're talking about non-point source pollution, which I'll define in a couple of slides. So, um, it's all about the natural water cycle. I know I showed you the slide back in, in May, but the nature has her perfect system of recycling, a circular system of cleaning and recycling and reusing the water. And so this nature-based approach, that is what this stormwater management plan is, is basically doing our best as humans to mimic those systems. So non-point source pollutants, these are pollutants from diffuse sources. And they're transported actually by our air and water, but collected, I'll say, through the stormwater runoff. And then it flows into our rivers and creeks and these, so it's very difficult to manage because it doesn't have a specific discharge point. Um, so we're not controlling a, a factory, um, you know, a, a industrial pipe coming out of a factory. But the, the pollutants include sediments, excess nutrients, oil, grease, bacteria, and a whole slew of chemicals. Um, so the coverage, what does this management plan cover? And the grant focus is on public right-of-way commercial and industrial land. But the actual management plan we put together is guidance for all the developed land within the city. So that's future and existing, and developed land is really all the land that has been modified for human habitat, which changed the original land cover. So at this point, with so many humans on the planet, it's, uh, there's very few places left untouched. So, um, as, as I think you've already had, you, you guys have been working on this for a while, but the city of Mosher is the Designated Management Agency, or DMA, for, um, the total maximum daily load requirements, uh, which is a federal requirement managed through DEQ. And the, let me see here, it's called the Miles Creek Sub Basin, and I have this larger aerial photo to show on the, on the west hand, on, on the left-hand side, or the west side of Mosher, is Rock Creek. And all those blue lines are all of the creeks and waters running to it. And on the, on the right-hand side here is Mosher Creek, and which um, picks up all the water from Dry Creek and, and all the rest of it. And you can see how small Mosher is at the top of, at the top of the screen here. So, um, it's a large contributory area that flows into these two creeks, and they're both fish-bearing creeks, and the temperatures are high in those creeks. And so that's why, um, it has to be managed through this TMDL program, which I'll talk a little bit more about later. Okay, so the general organization of the manual, it's, it begins with a summary, uh, summarizing the need to address. Why are we doing this? What is the problem? And the problem is systemic pollution of the air and waterways. And then there's a synopsis of really the city, the topography, and drainage patterns. And then we actually establish regulatory requirements, and then specific guidelines to use nature-based stormwater management. And why nature-based solutions? So the conventional approaches, the traditional engineering solutions for stormwater management have by, basically bypassed nature's, uh, natural cleansing processes. And the nature-based approach is an approach, design is an interesting word, but anyway, the purpose is to actually regenerate the ecosystems, work with them, instead of skipping over them and, um, and/or excessively polluting them. So, and the benefits from this extend upstream and downstream. Okay, so implementation of this plan will actually treat all the rain that falls for the, for the small storm events. I'll talk a little bit more about that later. It will infiltrate, or for the most part, infiltrate the rainwater for most storm events. And in the extremely, um, rare and large events, we'll make sure that we're safely conveying that water without causing unreasonable property damage. And who must meet these requirements? All future land development will be required to comply, and all developed land, so basically all of Mosher, will be encouraged to modify to meet this, and we'll, I'll talk more about that, um, later. Okay. Actually, it's okay for you guys to ask me questions along the way, if there's anything, i- if you want, and I guess I'd see hands up. But is there any questions so far? Okay, I'll keep going, and, and I'll give opportunity to, for questions at the end as well. Okay, so nature-based solutions address critical issues like climate change, water scarcity, food security, biodiversity loss, disaster, disaster risk, using natural processes and ecosystems, rather than traditional engineered solutions. And it includes things like reforestation, wetland restoration, and really the focus of this manual, green infrastructure. But we might see a little bit of that reforestation and wetland restoration as well, when we're talking about the TMDL solutions. So low-impact development, which might be LAD, which might be a term you've already heard, or is more commonly used. And this is, um, an approach to stormwater management that mimics natural, the natural water processes using site-specific, natural features and small-scale distributed practices. And the intention here is to treat the water, um, close to its source. Where, where the rain falls, treat it as soon as possible. And to basically preserve, this is sort of technical engineering terms, pre-development runoff rates and volumes. But the amount of water that would actually run off of a site and protect. and protect water quality. So LID and nature-based are similar, but nature-based is a little bit bigger picture. So keeping the big picture in mind, nature-based solutions, nature-based stormwater management, which I'll call NBSM, considers restoration of the larger ecosystem. It accounts for upstream and downstream impacts, has a broader context than LID. And both of these treat the rainwater as a resource instead of a waste product. Which really for the, the stormwater engineers is a, is a different mindset than, than we had when I started my career, what, thirty years ago? Okay, so the primary, our primary workhorses in, in these types of solutions are native plants and soils, and they're the ones that do the treatment. Man, we manage the rain where it falls. We evapotransparent, that's through the plants, and infiltrate as much water as possible. And we use regenerative materials, and prohibit the use of all sides. So pesticides, herbicides, and I just call them sides. Okay, so this is a land, yeah, land cover, I guess, well, called model or picture from above of the city of Mosher, and the pinks, all the pinks are really the develop, the development, and the darker pink is the denser development. The greens are, are forest, and then the tan colors are the shrub areas and, you know, sparsely covered areas. So the, the large, let me see, it's the red line around the edge, that's the urban growth boundary. And then the dashed black line is actually the city limits. So over there on the west side, you'll see a large area outside of the city, city limits, but inside the urban growth boundary, and that's where the the ODOT used to have the, the gravel pit over there. And so I, I, my understanding was the urban growth boundary was expanded to include that area for potential future development, and there's been some ideas around that. And then, of course, the, the downtown area, which is really just in the area of that large pond label. And then south of downtown are the new residential area, I call it the Southern Cliffs. And then there's quite a bit of newer residential development on the east hillsides over there by the title Highway Thirty. Okay. And then this is a, a figure or map of the drainage basins and waterways, and I've already mentioned. Okay, so the, the darker blue lines here are our delineations of the different drainage basins, so they, they're basically the ridge lines that separate where the drainage would, the water would flow one direction and the other, and there's basically four major basins here. And you can see Mosher Creek through there on the eastern side, and Rock Creek, which is actually the western boundary of the city limits over there on the left. And you can also, this also has like the steeper terrain, so the tan color on this map is the the steeper terrain, and you can see, vaguely see the contours there. Get a sense of, Mosher is very steep, lots of more challenge, tricky issues for stormwater thinking and design. Okay. So this is a repeat of, of what I had shared back in May, mostly, but Mosher's unique characteristics when thinking about stormwater. So all the downtown runoff, or really all runoff that flows to Highway Thirty, running east-west, west through downtown, must also meet ODOT criteria. You've got a lot of steep city streets, many over five percent, narrow rights-of-way to work within. We've got fractured bedrock underneath the soil surface, which is an interesting characteristic. Lots of it's very permeable. But we'll, we'll talk a little bit more about that later. And then we've got the, our long, dry summers, which I would say predicates what kind of native plants actually, and what plants in general work well, and what native plants will work well here. And the other really unique thing, and what makes this solution, I would, the nature-based ideas more viable in Mosher, is you have minimal conventional stormwater systems in place. Okay, and with that, we, we put together a map here of as much as we know about the existing stormwater systems that you have in Mosher. And the solid green, the sort of lime-green lines are the existing underground pipes. You've got, there's a pretty long one coming out of Fifth, down along Center, and then out around the Mosher School. There's one on Main Street, and Oak, and there's a, there's another one, which is a private pipe in the Mosher Creek place up there. And then the solid brown lines are the stormwater ditches. And there's, yeah, I'll call them ditches, roadside ditches. And there's a long one that meanders down Husky Road, and connects with some, is picked up into a small pipe system there where Husky Road meets State Road. And somewhere down there, that pipe discharges apparently into Mosher Creek, and that's part of the TMDL work and solutions we have to look at. And then all of those dashed pipes, whether they're brown, I mean, those dash lines, whether they're brown or green, those are infiltration systems. So they're either roadside ditches, or they're buried perforated pipes in the, basically roadside ditches. And so that's basically your southern residential neighborhood roads. And those are infiltration systems, but they don't, they don't have any pretreatment, which is something we'll talk about a little bit later when we get to the recommendations. Okay. So here's the, here's the issue, is the pollution of the air and water, and this is a very quick summary of how we got here. So we had a population explosion over the last two hundred-plus years. One billion, we're up to eight, one billion to eight billion people. Human activities are the, are, are the reason for the pollution, transportation, power generation, industrial processing, lot of agricultural runoff, human sewage, and waste, or improper management of human sewage and waste. And a lot of these are the contribu-, a lot of those activities are the contributors to the non-point source pollutants and the stormwater, which the stormwater carries and, and basically brings to our creeks and waterways. So this is, I'm not gonna read all of these, but just in our roadways and our traditional lawn care, these are the lists of the non-point source pollutants that we know are being carried there, and these are the, some of these are really tricky is not a good enough word, but to actually treat and, and clean. But the, what we have found, what, what we, as far as the scientists and the, and the chemists and biologists have found, is that the plants and soils, their root system and the entire biochemistry that's going on with the plants, the roots, and the soils are the best cleaners of all of these things. So once created, those pollutants spread naturally through our air and water cycles, and the excessive amount of these pollutants is overwhelming the natural systems. And the solution of, oh, this, this, you know, the storyline dilution is the solution for pollution, well, that worked a long time ago, when there were a few people on the planet, but now there's too many. So we have to, we have to figure out some other ways. Okay, and then our conventional practices of pipes and inlets and pipes and large treatment basins and all that fail to treat the pollution before it enters the conveyance systems. And so what we're doing, what we've done is we've got a lot, we've got polluted water and a lot more of it getting to our waterways that used to infiltrate down through the ground and, and slowly work its way and get cleaned along the way before it gets to our waterways, so all this fast-moving water in our waterways erode stream banks, creating more sedimentation and pollution. And that fast-moving water also reduces the streams and creeks' ability to clean the water. They use, typically, they use settling and oxygenation and other biochemical processes to do that cleaning. So, and then the conventional approaches also add pollution from the materials that we use, we've been using. Our plast-, all the plastics and all the concrete and et cetera. So these excessive costs, okay, this one I actually wanna read from the, if I can find it here, yes, the excessive costs of the conventional systems are crippling the financial capacity of our cities, both small and large. And it, this, this financial issue is now, we're getting caught in that financial issue, and it continues that, we're continuing the endless cycle of damage control in lieu of investing in restoration of our natural systems. So it's, it's, it's a lot, yes. Okay, so transition to nature-based solutions. So we do, humans, we do have the resources and the ingenuity to shift. The pollution disaster, and yet overwhelming inaction is prevalent. Choices we make every day can empower us individually to address the broader issues collaboratively. So the following general approaches are recommended. First, get informed. Second, shift individual practices. Third, stay informed and be skeptical, be skeptical of any one-size-fits-all solutions. Shift to, together, shift to regenerative practices within our communities. Take responsibility for the damage we've done. And then along the way, remember that every choice we make has impact. And stay informed, patient, and open to trying new solutions. So we're in the process of figuring this out, so this is a, this is a fantastic pictogram, I'm not exactly sure what to call this, but to, to just think about the interdependent nature of all of our different ma- major societal systems, and we can't just fix it in, in one sector, every, everything we do impacts everything else, so these kinds of solutions, we need to think really broadly and, and work our way through it. So we do have helpers. There are a lot of large cities who have paved the way. Portland and Seattle have, have done a lot, and most, we have regional stormwater manuals that are working on this, and that, and we're gonna use those for the city of Mosher. So these solutions will take time, they'll require resources, and we'll need, without a doubt, the support of the whole community to do this. And as we, as we work through this, risk is inherent, it's something relatively new, and and risk is, risk is gonna be part of the learning curve. So once again, teamwork is crucial. So we have, these are some pictures I've taken from some local local projects that were sold as probably LID, and they failed on a couple of different, I'll just point out a few different things, but mostly what we're looking at here is failure and maintenance. So on the left is a large concrete facility that I, I don't think it was ever actually planted, and then eventually they put a few trees, and you can see one tree at the far end. Well, we need plants and soils to do our cleaning work, so I don't, that's basically become a pollution trap there. And the picture in the center, we've got rocks down in the bottom where the water flows, where we need to have plants and soils. And on the right-hand side, that was actually planted really well in the beginning, and then it wasn't maintained. So, so maintenance and understanding the plants and soils is a big part of the learning curve here. Okay, so now we're gonna shift into actually applying nature-based solutions, and it has to start at the very beginning, and there should be a big light bulb on this slide, so right at the conceptual, right at the very beginning, when we start to think about developing a piece of land, we need to start thinking about, look at existing features, drainage and topography, because this will, thinking about nature-based solutions, this will determine what, where, and how to develop. Where the buildings are, the orientation of the buildings, the materials used in the buildings, how we get the roof runoff to the BMPs, et cetera. So adding, adding nature-based after building concept, concepts are fixed, does not work. And nature-based solutions recognize water as life-giving, mimics natural ecosystems, healthy soils and native plants are essential. The conveyance in swales and, and other systems encourages absorption and infiltration, and works with the natural water cycle instead of bypassing it, and encourages biodiversity with beneficial flora and fauna. So when the solutions that we're talking about, when we're talking about LID or nature-based, we call them best management practices, because they tend to be a lot of small solutions on a site. And so this is a chart that's in, or a table that's in the, the draft plan that is still being worked on, but basically on the left, we're listing the different best management practices names, and then we're going to, what's the appropriate application for that type of solution? And then I've started off with one reference handbook, but we'll reference several different sources, and then provide specific design requirements and criteria for using that in Mosher. So some of these manuals come from the west side of the Cascades, so we have to modify slightly for the east side of the Cascades in Mosher. But in this way, we can use the work of all those other cities and not redo it all for the city of Mosher. And also give good criteria and guidance to folks who are actually trying to implement these solutions in Mosher. So there's, there's several pages in the, in the draft manual, defining all the design criteria, so design storms. What we refer to, I wanted to mention, is the water quality design storm. That's the design storm we designed for treatment. And I wanna explain that. So it is, in Mosher, it's about a one-inch of rain in twenty-four hours. And what that, what the water quality design storm means And what that, what the water quality design storm means is every storm that is one inch or less in 24 hours, when you add all of those storms up over the entire year, that accounts for 90% of the volume of rainfall. So what it means is we can design to treat a very small storm and we can capture most, the large majority of pollutants in, in the large majority of pollutants, basically. Okay. And so the, there's specific design criteria and guidance for soils and engineering technical details that are in the guy, in the manual. And if you guys, as you read through that, if you have questions for me, please ask. I've already had one engineering peer review and I imagine the city engineer will also take a look at this. So on this slide and the next, I, I don't, I don't think I need to go through these, but there are 10 basic criteria for every site that I have written out. And this is for a stormwater engineer, this is all, um, yeah, all these terms make sense. So in there, number four is treat the water quality storm. sizing each BMP for all the rain that flows to it, mimicking natural pre-development. Addressing the, the, the rain, the stormwater flows to the site. And then what is okay to leave the site? So we'll manage all the rain that falls on the site with NBSM practices. And we'll infiltrate what we call the 10-year design storm. And address downstream conveyance for the larger storm events and specifically the hundred-year storm for one-foot freeboard to finish floors. So that makes sure we're not flooding our homes. And then if ODOT has any additional criteria, I, we're working on Washington Street Design right now. And I think we've, we're, we've sorted out how to address ODOT's criteria within these 10 um, criteria right here, the, the number, whatever. So, um, but anyway, we all the applicants need to know that they need to get things approved by ODOT if they're doing any work in their right-of-way. Okay. And then I'm just want to mention that we also are clear in there on what needs to be submitted with the project to the city so we can evaluate whether or not they're in compliance with this. Okay. And then in the appendix, you'll, that you have, you'll see there's, I think it's four pages. And so we have a native plant list for the city of Mosher. And I just did a sampling here. So you can see if you look in the third column, there's a, I have, there's a couple of grasses, there's shrubs or, or bushes. And, um, there's a list of trees and there's a whole bunch of wildflowers. And, uh, there's several different categories other than just like how close to put them together and where to use them, locations in the, in the facilities. So it's, should be a very helpful guide. And this, I will also have peer reviewed by an expert on the local native plants. And on the right-hand side of the screen is, um, soil, soil depth requirements for the different BMPs. So we have to make sure that the soil is deep enough for these plants to grow well and thrive. So, yep. And then O and M is the other, operations and maintenance plan is going to be required with each of the submittals. And, um, and for some of these solutions, like green roofs and porous pavement, the city may want to require, um, an actual written agreement with the developer to make sure they're not just building these things and then, that they'll be taking, that they'll be maintained and that there's financial, that they'll be, that there's finances together in perpetuity to actually maintain them. So two of these slides you already saw earlier when I was talking, um, about, uh, maintenance and learning from other cities. And the, the middle slide is a new one. This was a facility that was, it's, I wouldn't call it nature-based because it, it was taking the stormwater from a whole community that was probably 20 homes in there. But it was actually, it was actually functioning pretty well as a water quality facility and had a whole bunch of um, really nice plants. The maintenance has changed, they're starting to use herbicides and pesticides around the facility and the plants are dying. So, um, or falling back. So these things, yeah, it's not just designing them and getting them built, but it's, um, seeing them all the way through. It's gonna be important. Okay. And then also in the appendix, we have, there's a placeholder for Washington, the Washington Street Design, which when we're finished, we're gonna, that's represented by the, um, sketch on the left with the planter swale. So that's what we're gonna call a roadside swale. There's gonna be more details, that was an early sketch, we're in design now. And there'll actually be a lot of, we'll have calculations in there, we'll have, um, requirements for infiltration testing. So there'll be a lot of information that other, anyone else trying to do a roadside swale in the city of Mosher will have a very good example to follow. And then the one on the right is the planting plan that we put together as an enhancement for the joint-use facility. And that one, I walked you through that design back in, um, May. So the idea is that we'll have some good examples in the appendix. And then I think as, um, as we have more solutions in the city of Mosher, we can just keep appending that so that, you know, we don't have to keep reinventing the wheel, but the things that work, we can use again. Okay. And then I wanted to mention the public outreach. So, um, early last year, the former city manager connected me, when I was getting started on this, connected me with a lot of local residents that either represented those recent residential developments. Or, uh, or other folks that had, like Matthew Kerner, who had maintained a number of the city's systems for, it was a while back, but you know, folks that knew about the existing systems. And so I met with a bunch of them, we, I had some email interactions. The, the two pictures on the left, um, is something I didn't mention yet in the report, but I'll, or the management plan, but I will. There was a, a couple of people who are interested in doing water quality treatment for those, for the stormwater that, uh, goes through the I-84 Bridge over, uh, Rock Creek, through those scuppers and basically drops onto the path and then into Rock Creek. So I did some sketches and had some initial conversations with ODOT and that might be a project that can be followed through on. And then there are, um, numerous clogged inlets and non-maintained facilities. The one on the right is from private property and, um, I think we can do some, I think there can be some improvements with maintenance, both maybe for the city crews and also for the private development. So they understand what they're taking on with these, um, underground pipe systems. Okay. And, um, so we have a beginning list of recommendations in the stormwater management plan. There's six of them so far, we're gonna further refine these and, um, I want to mention the second one first. So addition of vegetated treatment for all infiltration systems. So all those dashed green lines and dashed brown lines we were looking at earlier, encouraging, um, planted BMPs to treat that water before it infiltrates. And the first recommendation is water quality testing to inform number two, really. So on those residential hillsides, there's water that seeps out the bottom of what I call the cliffs. And there's a seep or a spring, everyone calls it over there by Center Street, um, that pops out. And I think if we did some water quality testing of that spring, that wouldn't be very expensive, we'd find out if we actually do have pollutants, pollutants seeping, you know, moving through the fractured bedrock and daylighting down below. And that might, that might either, uh, tell you you have lots more time or maybe some of those should be, you know, those vegetated treatment systems should be installed sooner versus later. Okay. And then the third one is really a placeholder. We need to do a little bit more research to figure out where those pipes discharge into Mosher Creek. The ones I was talking about at the bottom of Husky Road. And apparently there's another pipe that's listed in your TMDL report that discharges to Rock Creek and we don't know where that is yet, but we, um, need to con, so I need to contact ODOT and the county and find out where these pipes are and see if we can, um, come up with some, uh, concepts anyway that might be possible to help with the high temperatures in those creeks. And then the last three recommendations are all about education. So number four is really what is going through the basics of this with the residents, a larger group of residents of the city and, you know, developers and et cetera. So that we get more people informed on this and, um, and part of the team. And then outreach to private facility owners that focus with maintenance. And then education and outreach assistance to city crews and maybe even, um, working together with other cities. I, Stoner told me a little bit about what you guys were trying to do with, uh, Hood River on, on one aspect, but maybe getting help for maintenance of some of those existing pipes that you have with vac trucks and things that could be loaned from your neighboring cities that the city of Mosher is just too small to own. Okay. So lots of information. Wanted to give space if anybody had any questions.
Yeah, yeah, Jody, thank you. A lot, a lot of material there. I've got two, actually I have three. One, and, and this, we don't have to spend time on this tonight, but I'd be very curious, when I look at all undeveloped land, I, first question comes to my mind, how much undeveloped land do we actually have in the city? And we've got the UP Dedenland, there's some infill residential sites. The Mosher Bluffs and Tannawashie, I think all the homes were required to have stormwater management, dry wells and so on. So I'm just curious, going forward, should we, and when we codify this, you know, how, where, how much application is going to be going, going into the future in terms of regulatory? Never mind the encourage the existing landowner's piece. So that's one question. But the, the other question, maybe more important right now, what are, what are the next steps? Both task, delivery and schedule to actually get some this, this plan codified, you know, in, in Mosher's, uh, code. And, and, and Colleen, yeah, go ahead and answer that. And Colleen, while you're, you have the floor, how are we doing on the grant funding to cover the cost to date and future costs to wrap this up?
Yeah, we've been staying in, within the budget of $100,000 pretty well, and that's much due to Jody's good work. As far as codifying this, we have, um, entered into an agreement with Willamette Trust who have, um, professional planners on staff and they will be writing the code for the best management practices. And that was my point as well, is that all of this is going to be compiled into actual design criteria, which Jody's outlined in the plan, but, but code that requires steps for each of the developers to take and much of the cost for the land that is private land or land that's developable still will be the burden of that, the cost for the stormwater treatment will be put on that developer. Other than the public land, even the public right-of-way will be their responsibility, it usually is. And they'll just have to follow the ordinances and how they instruct those developers to do this work. The other question that I had for Jody was, um, is, I've forgotten, Jody, forgive me. Is there somewhere in there, in the stormwater plan that mentions what our annual rainfall is in Mosher? I think that's a pretty good thing to bring up, just as typical. Just because we're always talking about rainfall and stormwater. And, yeah, what's our annual? So maybe you have it, maybe.
I don't, I don't, so I think Hood River is around 30 inches and I think Mosher's, um,
22.
I, I think it's a good idea to put it in the introduction, just to give everybody an idea what our climate is like.
What's interesting is that, so the way we actually design these is for the design storm events. Which are very close to the same. It's really interesting. Not annual rainfall, but it's, it's all about the records of how intense the storms are. Anyway, but that isn't in there, but I can put it in, I can add it.
Yeah, I think it's a, just a general, um, measure that people
Sure.
like to understand. And then, um, the other question that I had is, you know, because we're bringing the TMDL into this as a component for public education, but also partnership, I think, if we are gonna look at some of the, um, urban growth boundary area, definitely state parks is within that urban growth boundary around Rock Creek Park there. Um, there, besides the county, there are other agencies that should see the draft of this along with DEQ. And, um, ODFW I think would be a good one as well. So it'd be a good idea to kind of get their thoughts on it before we finalize it. And then, and then with, um, just to note that Willamette Trust will not be charging us. We saved about $25,000 in the budget to go toward the planning and implementation.
Good, good, great. Well, well, this plan itself, give me, what are the schedule? What's the schedule to wrap up the plan itself before we get to the specifics and the code?
It's due by December 31st of this year. And so Jody's been kind of furiously working on it and um, I think what she's asking for from council, and Jody, correct me if I'm wrong here, is to just give her your blessing to keep going. And, you know, if you have any thoughts or questions or input, she really needs it now.
And, and what I would add to that is, so we still have a little bit of refinement to do to the plan. If, if there's a lot of information to absorb, so like if it's totally fine if you don't have questions tonight, but if you want to review the plan, you all have it. And you have any questions, if you can get those to us within the next two weeks, then we will, will address those questions because it's really important that you understand what we're doing. And that if you have any questions, we address them now before we finish with the plan.
Yeah, yes, where, where I'm just going with the schedule and how much undeveloped land, you know, as Colleen was saying, so the developer is gonna incur the cost. I, I guess I feel like as a council, we should understand what the implications are of these best management practices. If we're gonna codify and regulate, whether it's commercial, industrial or infill, private, you know, residential development, I, I'd like to go into it eyes wide open. Here, here, you know, we think this is good policy, as you, you know, stated, you know, so, so much in your briefing, Jody, but it's, it's worth it. You know, the policy is solid policy and it's worth the cost that we're, we're going to, you know, impose on future development. Like I say, in Mosher Bluffs, house my wife and I built and Ron's house, we had to put in stormwater management as part of our site development. House my wife and I built and Ron's house, we had to put in stormwater management as part of our site development plan permit. But, you know, what does it mean to the lot downtown that's not developed? You know, what, what, what is, what are those regulatory requirements, best management practices going to mean? You know, I, again, I just feel like council should understand that. As we adopt, you know, a code that's going to impose requirements.
Yeah, and with the, with the planner will bring that back to you. Once they read this plan, they'll come up with, they'll probably take some. Other examples for code that matches this type of low impact development, nature-based solutions. Um, philosophy and design criteria. And they'll bring it back to you and it could be something like. You know, like she, like Jody was saying is to mitigate certain storm events. Um, but it also could be similar to what we've done in the residential areas, only with a lot more. Plant-based solutions and granted, we can require. I mean, I think on residential property, we didn't require um. Those best management practices because there's no way to go back and review it. We don't have staff for that. But when um, when they, when a developer who does commercial or industrial development. Brings us their application for permit. They can work with either the city stormwater engineer or the city planner. To develop their own BMPs based on their. Um, you know, topography and all of that.
Could I ask a question just in regards, I missed maybe at the beginning. Is there uh, inner, inner, is there any inner agency? Um, cross, given the fact that we can only do our part to, goes into our rivers, et cetera, but our neighboring communities. Is there some sort of coalition of neighboring communities that are following these same bylaws, recommendations, et cetera? So that there's, my, I guess to my point is. We're, we're going through this legwork of adopting um, stormwater. Uh, you know wastewater pollution parameters, but if our neighbor next door isn't doing that and or. Larger scale development like the Google plant and some of these other more. Is there any outreach to our neighboring cities as far as some of these recommendations? Or is this, this just simply a Moser policy that we're trying to implement?
We, we have jurisdiction only within the watersheds of the TMDL. But we can, like Jody said in her um, presentation. We're using a lot of the recommendations of the cities that have done this well. And then I would imagine we could easily reach, and I'm sure Jody's talked to the people in Hood River and possibly over in the Dells and. Rowan, we not know, but um, I think that. What the, the reason we're doing this is we're, if we're going to allow any kind of development, DEQ requires that we have one of these on file. And it is codified, which is why in the upper um. In the heights up there where all the residential, new residential properties have been developed.
Yeah.
Those, those, there is code um, for them to comply.
I mean, I'm, I'm just thinking in point, I recognize those photos from in Hood River. And now with the, that huge massive development just south of Walmart. I'm, you know, and unfortunately they tore out a bunch of the trees and anyway. Side, side point, I'm just wondering if, if, just with, with these efforts, if it makes sense to. Well, you know, create some sort of avenue for. Like a sign-on agreement of neighboring communities to adopt similar policies and have it labeled under. Like, I don't know, come up with a title for like a gorge. Waste stormwater, um, you know, basically a utility company, if you will.
It's a great idea. It's a great idea.
And then, and then you're, then you're using those resources like dump trucks or, you know. Buying large, large sweeping swaths of fab, like, you know, texturized fabric, what's needed to create the swales, et cetera.
Right, but then the, the Soil and Water Conservation District and the Watershed Council. And ODFW, ODOT, um, State Parks. Um, OWEB, OWRD. All of those agencies work within our, our watershed that we're responsible for. So they have resources that we can draw upon and um. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I just think they're great, I think they're great policies though.
Yeah.
Well, well, listen, you know, we've, we've spent about an hour here tonight, Jody, thank you for your thorough briefing. I guess I'm a little concerned that we have to wrap this up in December because there's. You know, this, this is a, you know, a hefty policy that, you know, ultimately we adopt. I g- I guess where I am, I, you know, I'd like to have time to review the report. See if I have feedback for Jody, questions, what have you, maybe not. I think where the rubber meets the road for me is, okay, what are going to be those. Engineering or, you know, nature-based solution, best management practices that we will actually impose on future development? What, what, you know, what, what does that look like more specifically? And so maybe that's when we see, you know, more iteration on the code, but. Again, I, I feel like we should be eyes wide open and, but, you know, I'm not opposed to this by any means, but I. You know, more clarity on what it means to somebody that. You know, buys a lot downtown and infill a lot and wants to build a home, affordable home. You know, we're talking, you know, in today's dollars, it's going to be a five thousand dollar investment you have to do and. You know, in green stormwater management or not. So I don't know if we can ever get clarity on that, but go, go ahead, Jody, take it.
Well, well, what I would say with is if you have a, a creative designer. That this is going to be, and, and you've got a homeowner that's willing to maintain these systems and is educated. That it's, you can do it for less than you could do if you were trying to work conventional.
Yeah, yeah, I believe you.
But what you have to do is you have to cite the, cite your, what we call improvements, the buildings. In a way that you can easily take that runoff, water and treat it, like I've.
Well, that's, that's, that's where I think honestly, more like a utility company or like, just like. You, you have to sign, you have to get a building inspector to sign off on your building inspection. You would have, you know, some branch of intergovernmental like water authority. That is not only like approving new builds, but is going around to, to monitor to see that people are maintaining their water facilities. Or if there's like how we had the paint uh, issue. The, the contamination in our wastewater in the storm, uh, the sewer drain manhole. Thing that the, when Jaka or the, whatever, the new Jacobs company, they, they found out people were dumping paint. You know, some, somebody, some, some sort of. Like they, they submit a policy, they're, they're getting a, uh, their SDC costs. And they, they hire or they, they come up with a storm wastewater treatment. They have to submit it to like a inspector of sorts.
Well, in our case, it's going to be the city engineer and the planner, right? That, that's who's going to review the, the plans against our code and then enforcement is a problem. Well, listen, let's, let's, let's all go home and sleep on this, think about it, let's read the report, give some feedback. I, I guess, Colleen, if you're kind of overseeing this, I'd, I'd like to see some milestones, you know, when we are going to adopt. You know, we adopt the plan, then when we adopt the code, but what does the forward path look like? If that makes sense.
Yeah, um, the only way that I can, once I can give you exactly what date that would be or, or a timeline for adopting code. Would be, I think we have to get the plan finished first and then. I think DEQ will give us a little extra time, the beginning of the year to get the code written. Because I don't think they're going to be able to get the code written by December thirty-first and Sam Brown at DEQ has been very good about that. Um, J- uh, Jody's just finishing up the plan by December thirty-first and then there will be a process where the. Planner brings the code to council. And I would imagine it will be, you know, one type of code for one particular zone and another type for another zone. Um, so.
Okay, more, more to follow. Okay.
Yeah, more to follow.
Okay, well, unless anybody has burning question or point, how about we wrap this agenda item for tonight, but. More, you know, all of us, it's incumbent on all of us to do as Jody said, please, please look, give any feedback if you have it. Okay, well, Jody, thank you and Colleen, thank you for the work on this. Um, good, good use of good grant money, so thank you. Okay, I'm going to move on. Laura's been with us because she's part of the code enforcement. Agenda topic that Colleen, you, you are the lead on, so proposed code enforcement. You want to take that up, Colleen, or? You're on mute.
Hi, everybody. I'm Colleen Coleman. Anyway, I'm sorry, I'm being facetious here.
We forgot.
All right, um, do you want me to share my screen for this? Um, are there members of the public still on Amy that want to see it? Okay, I'm just going to share my uh, staff report. Hang on, let's see, here we go. All right, um, Laura really is the author of all of this, but she, we worked together back in twenty twenty-one. To look at how to enforce the city code. Um, and what are the protocols for that? Because oftentimes you'll get somebody who walks into the office and. Has a burning question or a difficulty or complaint. And first of all, it has to relate to our code to be enforceable um, to a certain extent. So um, Laura developed sort of an outline of enforcement steps. One where the city staff receives a complaint and that can come verbally or by email or phone. And then they develop um, all of the information on a complaint form that's shared in your packet. And then uh, the city manager appoints the appropriate staff to address the complaint. Depending on the code violation, you know, it could be the engineer, the planner, public works officer, et cetera. Also, as you guys probably all know, the county sheriff does serve the city. Um, those guys take rounds through the city and will, will often help with any kind of um. Violation of state law and that's happening in Moser, so that's, that's a good thing to know. Um, once the staff member that's appointed by the city manager assesses the situation. And conducts a site onsite investigation. Then they discuss it with the property owner or the responsible party and then the staff reports. Um, what is developed, I would imagine to the city manager first. And then if it needs to go to council, like it can or executive session. Um, and then compliance action is taken. In our code, there are um, the penalties for almost every rule. What, whatever the violation is, the penalty is either citation or an um. Um, some sort of um, you know, cost to the person who is affecting the. The violation, so um, they have to pay a fine usually. And then it's a desist notice that goes sometimes on their car or on their home. And then um, other actions to address the code violations. So that's pretty much it. Laura, do you have anything you want to say?
Do you not?
Okay. So I think all we need is a vote or a motion from council um, to approve this, right Laura?
Uh, well, uh. This was for, for information only and Laura had informed me and I, and, and I went that this is really an administrative. Um, um, action, that it doesn't need approval from council, that it's gone through the, the process to. You know, get these forms um, completed in order for us to have some way to manage our complaints. We're a complaint-driven. Um. Uh, you know, we respond to, to complaints. We don't go out and seek them and this is a way to be able to, to track them and to uniformly. Um, um. Keep help with compliance as well as the final action of um, collecting fees or, or other things that. Uh, might arise from someone not coming into compliance.
This, this is really administrative procedure and sharing for council's knowledge and awareness, frankly. One, one thing, I like it, I would just say, you know, I, I would like us to all agree that the city manager and Andrea has the authority to. Set the priorities, you know, what, you know, what's most important to go after and. You know, we trust Andrea to bring it to council even when it, you know, some issue gets hot enough. You, you know, you elevate it to council for awareness or, you know, help in whatever the issue is, but. I think it's good. Thank you, Laura, and thank you, Colleen. Um, and, and the other thing is, you know, Andrea and team figure out. You know, where, where there's bang for the buck, so to speak, which, which are those. You know, actions out there that we really need to target. The priority setting, so any other comments, councilors, anyone, everyone? Good with it?
I, I just had a comment real, real quick, and that is that a lot of times councilors receive the most complaints. And I think it's up to councilors to come to the city manager or into the city office and. Have someone pull out a form like maybe Amy and just take notes.
Yeah, yeah, good, good point, yeah. Yeah, I always try and do that if I hear something, not, not that I do often, but. Bring it, hey Andrea, this is your problem.
I was, I was just curious to know how many, how many uh, uh, like complaints are actually coming in, would you say, Andrea, on a, on a week?
Well, I'll, I'll defer to, to Amy, but you know, we probably. We probably, I would say, you know, have, have at least one a week.
Okay, ranging from like, uh, give, give me the low end of like, Johnny doesn't bring his recycling bin after one day.
Ranging from, we can't get into the bathroom. Um, you know, not really a complaint, um, people dumping garbage to um, concerns about uh. Property lines and uh, you know, uh. And compliance with the building codes of, for certain things. They're usually neighbor-driven.
Yeah, yeah, I remember one where the chickens were wandering over into a neighbor's yard and. But there are other things that are pretty big, like.
Like not properly hooking up to sewer.
Right.
Would be one of those things or, you know, or illegally drop, you know, um. People taking advantage of, of the infrastructure that, that we provide, that others pay for, that sort of thing.
My, my neighbor Ron playing his music, rock music too loud. Okay, good, well, thank you, guys for uh, developing that, good, good work. All right. Let's move on. Uh, I think we're to city updates. Andrea, how about uh, next meeting, agenda topics you have in mind for December?
Um, well, December, I'm, I'm hoping that uh, we can uh, bring together some of those partners that you were talking, that we were. I- identifying when Jody um, presented, including um, uh. Having Jody and Stoner cooperate on the pieces that mesh with the TMDL. Um, I like the watershed, so, so that's the primary, um, that's the primary thing on the agenda at this time.
Okay, all right. Anything else, Andrea? You and Ron met with Aaron Hunt of UP recently. You guys want to just give us a thumbnail on how that went?
I'll let, I'll let Ron give his thumbnail. He sent me some good notes. Um, we really, well, I'll start, um, because we really kind of had a divide and conquer meeting in. Which we continued to try to um, keep at the top of the conversation access. Um, you know, um, access to the river and, and our loss of, of um, the ability, the ability to, you know. To, to get to Moser Creek. So that was kind of a, at this level and was, you know, was brought back into the conversation. To, to get to Mojer Creek. So that was kind of a, at this level and was, you know, was brought back into the conversation multiple times. And then we, uh, talked a little bit more, thought more about logistics of, um, the staging area. When they're going to be working on the bridges, um, what that impact will look like to Rock Creek. And we'll get more of those details as they come. And I'll let Ron add to the, to that. Brenna was also there.
Let's see, a couple of notes that I had was, uh, one of the positives was it looked like they were going to be able to preserve the trail. On the north of the tracks along the, the lake there.
That's good.
Yeah, uh, yeah, no impact to any skate park construction. Oh, a, a big one I thought was they're going to be doing some aisle driving at both bridges. At, at some point and those are going to be, uh, noisy. Noisy operations that we'll need to work with them to figure out best scheduling and how to. Minimize the impact to the town. Another one is, uh, we're gonna have to rework the roadbed under Rock Creek when they widen the bridge above it. To be able to maintain the clearance through there. Uh, also, they're gonna. Actually, s- sounds like if I interpret it right, they're gonna try to put together that fax for the community. About scheduling and, and, you know, and, and all the impacts that we're gonna have.
You guys talked about compensation for using the staging on city property? Good.
Uh, another one that could be a problematic is that they were gonna. Probably have to shut access to Rock Creek Park for, um, my, cause my memory was like maybe a week. Total, uh, that that would be during the summertime. So that's, uh, that won't be popular.
Right, and, and I, I heard, uh, um, two to three days when they're in there. And, you know, maybe a couple of times and they wouldn't be operating the crane during high winds, you know, so there will be much more. Close coordination needed with regards to some of those, those things that, that issue of, you know, Rock Creek getting closed for. A little bit and the other, um, in, in additional, um, space for staging when they're building the crane. And that's going to occur in July and August, which, uh.
Great timing.
It is going to be, you know, very impactful for, for how people are, um, accessing our lovely amenities here.
So one thought, if I may chime in, one thought that comes to mind is any large scale. Large scale construction project, for example, a high rise in the city center. They have to construct a alternative walkway next to the city building. That's covered for any droppings of a hammer, whatever, what have you. So they need to construct a public right of way. If there's development occurring that they'll have to construct, so why not, uh, propose possibly. With the, if we would like to have a walking bridge over the train tracks to be done with it so that we're. All of, all of our access now across the tracks is either on or. Could it be a possible avenue for the city to approach them where we, uh. Kind of negotiate with them. With this staging area and some of these other things that we try to ask them, hit them up seriously for some sort of. Whether it's at Rock Creek or some sort of. I don't know. Yeah, over access.
I'm not sure that they're required to maintain that access for us, given that they're.
I don't know.
Just below God.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know, just a thought. Whatever, whatever stipulation and.
The, uh, the access thing, we're just kind of starting that process and, and there's going to be some additional meetings to talk about. Uh, possibilities, different strategies. But it did appear that they were pretty clear that they didn't want to, uh, foot the bill for any cost or any access.
Smart, smart stance on their part, but.
Ly- Lydia, go ahead, Lydia, jump in.
Um, would they or would it be? Ideal on our, our part to approach UP for financial compensation for those days that will be lost? From Rock Creek Park users, like if we took the average. Like general, income generated for those days and be like, all right, so the city is losing X number of funds. You guys have access, yeah, like is that even feasible to approach them with an option like that?
Yeah, we, we can discuss that.
I think, um, you know, but we entered into what the language is, you know, reasonable. Discussions around, um, their, um, need for access on the UPRR property. Which was part of the, the settlement. They've been very hard line on saying no, you know. Municipalities have always and will always be responsible for creating crossings over railroads. I upped the price for the staging area. I, I wish it would have stuck to the, you know, when they smiled at me at the original price. And I said, no, I think I asked for, for more. Um, they came in a hot and I said, well, maybe I could get double that then. And so we are getting, you know, twenty-five hundred a month, um, for them to be, um, staging in that. You know, property, um, near the cherry growers and to the, to the west. Um, maybe be able to reach out and ask them if, you know, in addition to that, for every day that Rock Creek is closed. We get another five hundred dollars. Um, you know, they have, you know, it have to be reasonable. But, and then there's also a, um, need for water usage, so, uh, when it comes around to the, the contractor. And, you know, using water, we can get some additional, um, funding from that.
Andrea, did you, you know, under the settlement agreement, as you said, requires good faith discussions about environmental protection, security, safety. You know, compensation, do we need to enter it? Do we need to have a written agreement for those?
I do have a, I, I have an agreement with, uh, um, in my inbox related to the staging area. But, uh, um, could certainly, you know, want Laura to look at, at that and ensure that, you know, the safety is another piece that's, you know. This is the way Union Pacific does their, their work and, and, uh, you know, one of the. I, I had the assumption that they would be providing security fence around, um, the area. And, uh, and, and they, they well around their equipment in things which will block off. Our walking and dog walking access, back to, you know, your point about if a developer had a walkway. They, uh, that the area is so small that they, um, don't feel that they could safely allow folks. To be walking back and forth through the staging area and they're also going to be removing the fence between, um. Our prop- our property and, and the, and the tracks throughout construction, so there will be no fencing up. Throughout downtown Mojer, um, between, um, between the tracks and.
Well, that seems, that is, are they gonna then have to only be passing by at twenty miles an hour like every other vehicle? That passes through a unobstructed public. You know, neighboring, I mean, you wouldn't allow vehicles to drive sixty down city center street in Mojer.
How about, how about this?
I don't know, I mean.
Hey, Charlie, hold on, we can belabor this all, you know, all night.
I know.
If, if people have thoughts for Andrea, just shoot Andrea, say, hey, Andrea, think about this. Noah, Noah, go ahead.
I don't really wanna belabor this either, but, um, you know, kind of going along the lines of kind of what, what Ron suggested. With the, the kind of immense power of the railroad industrial complex kind of holds, um. Is there any consideration that we've made in the longer term for just building a pedestrian bridge near that area? I mean, I imagine it'll probably cost a lot of money, probably like a million bucks, but. Um, that, that walkway has been unofficially there since as long as I can remember, so, you know, pushing probably thirty years. Um, I guess I'm just curious, you know, like, has there been any consideration into looking into grant money? So that we can, um, continue to, to utilize that walkway?
Oh, um, first, I, I don't think we'll be able to consider u- utilizing the walkway. Because to walk over a crossing and to make that legitimate, that would mean horn honking. That, that was one of the things that we, we couldn't do. But the meeting next week with, with Aaron is, is his promise to work with the city. To obtain funding, you know, for, for, from design to build, not, not from Union Pacific. But they said they would stand up in front of Congress and they would, would hold our, you know, be partners with us to seek the money to do it. That's, that's where I fall, where people's.
Yeah, to, you know, the reality, we gotta be real here, finding grant money for that is gonna be a long time down the road, but. Certainly it can be our vision and our ultimate plan. Well, listen, good, good work, Andrea, meeting with Aaron. I know I've been in several meetings, Ron and Brenna, thank you for doing that. Keep pressing, I keep pressing, you know. You, you guys may know, Andrea and I went to the Transportation Surface Board and their team that works issues like this. And they reached out and expressed our concerns to, to Union Pacific and if we, if we don't have satisfaction. I'm, I'm certainly willing to go back to the NTSB and, and press further, you know, who knows? There's not a lot of help there because federal law preempts local law and we have, we have no authority and all we can do is beg and cajole. UP, but we keep working it. Okay, let's, uh, any other updates, uh, Andrea? Anything else in this agenda topic?
I do not have any other updates.
How, how about any other council members or staff, anything for the good this evening?
Oh, go ahead, Colleen.
No, you go ahead. You haven't spoken yet.
Oh, well, I was just, yeah, we're doing kind of updates and things. Um, I met with a wonderful group of. Uh, community members this morning, um, to talk about food insecurities in Mojer and just access to food. And all the things that we can do, um, for our people here, um, and obviously with the current. Climate and the pause on SNAP benefits and just everything that's going on and it was such a wonderfully inspiring. Meeting and everybody was just ready to like leap into action, so we've kind of got a game plan and things that are gonna be happening. Um, so just be on the lookout for, um, announcements and way to help, ways to give, ways to contribute. Um, but it's really amazing cause just nobody should ever go hungry, ever. Uh, so. So just know that, there is a group of people who are really jumping in and spearheading this and it was, it was so amazing. There'll be more information to follow, um, but that's, that's what is happening at the moment.
Gary?
Um, yeah, I just had a, a question, the, so I've been talking a little bit with Rusty often on and I've noticed. Um, like three times in the last, oh, a couple of weeks, um, truck. Trucks, uh, water trucks hooking up to our fire hydrant down there by the, by the school and I'm wondering if that's authorized? Are we being paid for that water and is there any kind of, uh, uh?
Block mechanism?
So, Gary.
Well, regulation on that, I mean, are, are we aware and are we regulating it and being?
I, I'd like to respond to that and, and, uh, we are trying to, um, develop the, the process in a way. To allow for that to occur, um, in a managed way and for the city to receive some resources from that. Without gouging our community members who are far away. The city water, um, is, is plentiful. We have, um, an abundance of, of water, our wells are very healthy and we're very close to the source. And, and we are able to help our community members who are, are struggling. The current operator that's filling tanks, they're, they're, the city ma- is aware of it. And, and once we have this process in, in order, um, we'll make sure that. They're following it the way they need to. Currently, um, they throw, Water Wagon is the, the, the. Um, folks and, and they have been paying a very minimal fee, um, with an arrangement, um, with the previous. Um, city manager, so we're trying to get the process in place and Gary, you know, when you spoke up, I'm like, here's Gary. Maybe he could, he could help what we want, we're going to get the fire department to help, um. Uh, be present when they're hooking up to the hydrants and, uh, and we've set a fee, um, for it. Um, so hopefully in the next few months that, that process will also get completed.
Okay, as, along, along those lines, just quickly, um, I don't know if you, if you were aware or not, Andrea. But, um, Rusty and I also discovered that the city does have a, uh, meter with a fire hydrant detachment on it. So that if we wanted to go to a metered, uh, uh, payment schedule rather than just per truck. That's, that's a, a possibility, so.
Yeah, there, there is actually an ordinance on file that requires that, so that's why we, we had that meter. So that, it, and Andrew has all that info.
Yeah, yeah, Andrew's been working this for quite, quite some time, so, but good, good question, Gary. Okay, anyone else? Raise your hand, anything for, uh.
I just wanted to say, to say quickly, um, when you mentioned UPRR is gonna be messing around in those bridge abutments. They should have a permit on file with the Corps of Engineers and ODFW. And sometimes those requirements can be leveraged a little bit for our purposes, whether it's stormwater. Or riparian habitat or even human, you know, development, so just, just a thought.
And, and with that, the, uh, with the Rock Creek piece, I don't know, does our, um. Is our gate up and opera, operational and? The, the coins that are there are doing their thing, do we have the ability to record the amount of times that that gate opens and closes?
Yes.
We do.
Think John Worsley can look at that data.
Okay.
Right, Amy?
Uh, I personally, oh, off the top of my head, but I can find out, definitely.
Okay, so if, if, I, I don't know if we would have that data for July for when Union Pacific is coming through. But that would be something as a, like numerical, anyway.
Yeah, 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 let's.
Um, and then, and then lastly, uh. In regards to the, uh, the twin, the twin tunnels trail, who, who do, is that through Oregon Parks? For, uh, uh, somebody brought to my attention just the idea of, uh, painted lanes. For bikers and or.
Yeah, parks.
You know, okay.
Oregon Parks.
And, and we don't, we don't work with, we wouldn't have any say, it would be directly, uh, us as a city, would we? Wanna communicate with them for safety issues, I guess.
Yeah, whoever talked to you, you ought to send them to Oregon Parks and Andrea's got enough on the play.
Okay, yeah, 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 okay, just.
Our historic highway, um, I mean.
All right, hey, you guys.
All right.
Good meeting, Laura, thank you, Andrea, Amy, Colleen, thanks for all the good staff work. Okay, we're gonna adjourn council meeting at, what time you guys have, seven forty-eight? Thank you all. Good evening, this meeting's adjourned.
Happy fall, y'all.
Good night.
Night.